Regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order for December 14, 2021, 8:00 PM. We will now take a moment of silent prayer or meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Please join me.
Present. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Heng?
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Present.
Chair Becerra?
Here. Tonight, we have the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting on October 26, 2021. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? The minutes are approved as submitted. Would anyone like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Tonight, we have one continued public hearing. Continued from October 26, 21. This matter, yes, from the regular Planning Commission meeting on October 26, 21. Joanne, who will represent the staff report?
If I could interrupt before Joanne announces, before she introduces Camila, I wanted to mention that tonight is Camila's last Planning Commission with us. She will be moving on to San Marino, so we're very sad to see her go. So tonight, she'll be doing her last presentation with West Covina.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is the second meeting on this item, the proposed wireless telecommunications facility. So I'm going to skip through the first couple of slides quickly because we've been over them. This is the proposed site right next to Heritage Park at the Valencia Heights Water Company property. And the site plan is just indicating the water towers, the current facilities of the Valencia Heights, and then the existing trees, the new monoecalyptus, and then the new facilities with that. I'm zoomed in a little bit more. Once again, the proposed facility with the proposed equipment shelter, and then the generator to the side with the new trees that they're going to be proposing with this proposal, the new eucalyptus trees, and then new landscaping along the fence facing Heritage Park. This is elevation, the new equipment cabinet, the generator, the new monoecalyptus with the proposed antennas, and then the red are future co-location antennas should a new company wish to co-locate, but they're not being proposed at this time at the red. And then it would be maxed out at 60 feet. From the last meeting, the Planning Commission requested that there was more explanation into the justification plots, more photo simulations, and an explanation or further information as to why the equipment couldn't be vaulted. And all of these are covered in attachments 3, 7, 8, and 9. Some were new and some were updated from the previous meeting. This is just the, to clarify, the code standards. The West Covina Municipal Code only requires that equipment be vaulted if it's on city property, and if it's not on city property, it's not a requirement. This map is indicating all the photos where the simulations were taken and adjusted. The new locations are sites F and G to the south. I do want to notate that it was requested that they take a simulation closest to the residential property where the little G mark is, so you can see the simulations from there. Simulation, sorry. And then they did take it from the furthest corner on the park side and not on the residential property. And if they were to take it from the residential property, it would be more elevated from the pad because this is at the bottom of the slope. So let's take a look at those. So you have seen this one before. This is from the hiking trail Heritage Park. This is from Cameron Avenue. This is from the residential properties to the east on the private street. The entrance at East Cameron Avenue. The entrance, the trail at Hillside Drive, the entrance, I should say. And then these are the new ones. So this is the, along the trail facing the northeast, which was F. And the last new one, this is G from the very bottom of the slope in the corner of the park property. So this map, we had questions about city property locations and the radius map distancing. So this is Heritage Park in green that the city owns, and this is the parcel I was mentioning last time that the city owns as well, a small sliver to the south. So we own both of the green properties, which is why we were noticed twice. And then this line is just indicating the 300-foot radius that was notified. This meeting was from previously. And we have not received any new comments since the last meeting to planning. We did receive a letter from the attorneys for, from the applicant, and that was provided as the last attachment on your agenda. And so to sum it up, staff is still recommending approval for conditional use permit 2103. I am open for my questions, and I can go back to any previous slides if you want to take a look at those more closely. And the applicant is here. Should you have any questions for them as well?
Paulina, do we have any of the pink cards of anyone who will be speaking? Okay. Okay. Sorry. Okay. So thank you for that, for the staff report, and on behalf of the Commission, we wish you well on your new endeavor. Does any member of the Planning Commission have any questions for the staff since the public hearing was closed on October 26, 2021 meeting? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Heng? Commissioner Gutierrez?
For the applicant or the staff?
Staff.
Not the same.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Yes. So at the, at the last public hearing on this, I had inquired as to what the status was with regard to any negotiations between the City of West Covina and the applicant with regard to placing the tower on one of our parcels of property, one of the City of West Covina parcels of property. And it occurred to me that there was a statement that no agreement was reached. My question is, were there ever any negotiations that took place?
Vice Chair Lewis? I did not see an agreement come through my desk regarding a cell site for Heritage Park or any of those parcels near that site. So there was no, I don't, request from the applicant for use of city property in that area. We do have cell towers on other city properties within the, within the City of West Covina.
Okay. All right. That answers my question. Thank you.
So now we'll reopen for public hearing. We'll be hearing testimony again from the applicant. Jessica, I'm sorry, I switched glasses. Is it Greven?
Greven. Slide just shows the location of the wireless facility. This slide shows the purpose for this wireless facility. It's due to the increasing number of people working from home. This also will provide a, the gap in coverage that we have on our propagation map that you'll see later on as well. This cell site would help coverage and then also provide FirstNet to the first responders, police, and fire in the area. And the next slide. This is elevations that were updated since our last Planning Commission. On this elevation, since we are unable to vault the facility and graffiti was brought up as a concern, AT&amp;T did add climbing vines to the CMU wall enclosure to help deter any These are just another view of the photo sims that Camila had presented. This shows at the top of Hillside. That's the residential community above the Water District. This is from the residential's below. Our photo sim vendor did try to get as close to the properties as possible. I know it was requested to try to get it in the backyards, but she was unsuccessful in order to get approval. So that is from the bottom of the hillside. And then this is from the back gate of another property on Hillside at 3183 Hillside Residence. And that shows the new sim. These are the coverage maps that our RF engineer provided. The image on the left shows the, the green is the indoor coverage in the area, and the purple dots around the green show the existing facilities. The red dot in the middle is where our proposed facility is going to go. And as you can see, there's no indoor coverage in the area. And then the photo on the right is the coverage after the cell site. And as you can see, the indoor coverage has significantly increased with the proposed And this is just the legend for the covers map to show how they are red. The green indicates the indoor coverage, the yellow indicates the vehicle coverage, and the purple indicates the outdoor usage. And then that's all I have for that. And then I do want to answer the question in regards to the city park. I did speak with Nicole, I believe she was assistant planner, city manager at the time, maybe in 2020, 2019, in regards to co-locating or installing a wireless facility on a city property. There was no formal amendment or lease agreement brought to us. It was, we weren't even able to agree on the starting terms of the negotiations as far as the rental portions. So then it never went anywhere after that. I have any, I'm here if you guys have any other questions. I also have someone from AT&amp;T as well.
Well, maybe we'll wait after we hear from the second, or actually, we'll see if they have any questions for you. Commissioner Williams, any questions for Jessica? Commissioner Heng?
I have a quick question, though, regarding the photo sims. This particular area, since it's a hillside area, it's almost like a bowl, the area. So for the photo sims, it seems that location, you have ID. Can you bring up the location A through? So all the areas, A through G, I believe? I can't really see, it's really small. So this particular area is almost like a bowl. So all the photo sim area, I understand that it's within the park area, in the public street area, but all the photo sims is basically taken down at the bottom of the, like a bowl area. Is that correct?
No. So if you look at item C, that's on the residential that's up on a hill. That's the residential's right next to, right next to the water tanks.
Okay.
And then item E is up on hill, up on Hillside. And then item G is also, that's up against the hill, the top, I mean, we got as close to the property line as we could. Items A and E are more, are down on the, on the park side. And then item B is, is from the main street.
Okay. So you look at Hillside, I believe item E and G is a gradual slope going uphill. That's the beginning of the slope, basically, and it continue rises all the way up in around the, that's the Hillside area. And then also the heritage, I believe that's a heritage street that wraps around all that property. The elevation between that point and the bottom portion, which is a bowl area, do you know how many feet that would be?
I do not know.
You have to guess. Is it 10 feet? Or 60 feet?
Our cell site is less than, or is more than 100 feet away from the closest residential, so I would say more than 100 feet.
Correct. I was just talking about the elevations in the bowl portion where the Heritage Park, which is wrap around G and that little area. Does anyone know what the elevation is of the homes that wrap around that area? Basically, they're higher, I would assume, than that area that we were taking the photo sim from. So that would, fair assumption?
Correct. Yeah, G was the closest we can get to the neighboring backyard.
Okay. But it's at the lowest elevation versus most of the homes that wrap around that, that hillside is much higher.
Correct. So if we would have taken it, we, you just wouldn't get the view, and I thought from our last planning here, you wanted it from the backyard.
Correct.
Not the front yard.
Correct.
So we could have taken it from Hillside Road, but that would have been from the front yard.
Correct. But this, it is, it is true, but it's not their backyard per se because the, the park is kind of dropped below their backyard, which is quite, I believe it's quite a distant, but I just don't know, like, whether it's 60 feet or 100 feet above from the park up.
Yeah. Item G, like I said, that's up against the gate.
Okay.
The neighboring backyard. But that's as close as we could get.
Yes, I understand that.
To get permission.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Gutierrez? Any questions?
Yes. So, so you're saying that this coverage is absolutely needed?
Yes.
And does AT&amp;T provide its customers with cell boosters for residents who may have technical, technical issues connecting to their cell phones? Does an AT&amp;T provide the services of boosters in homes who have Wi-Fi?
I'm sure that is something that they provide if it's requested, maybe in.
Or maybe AT&amp;T can answer that.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dan Vazanalek, and I work for AT&amp;T's External Affairs Group. You know, it's a great question. So in the past, years ago, we did provide customers with femto cells, boosters. Haven't been doing that. It's not an industry standard. Customers can purchase those. But again, it's not an optimal solution. It'll provide immediate coverage within your home, but the second you step into your garage or you step into your car while you're on a call, it's dropped. Or if you're using some sort of data service, it's, again, dropped. So it's not a very useful service. It was years ago when voice was important.
Great. And then my next question is, how does the maps that you provide differ from the maps that are on the FCC's website?
So I, I couldn't technically answer those questions, but I can tell you that the maps that you guys have been provided, along with the RF statement from our engineer that was signed, is a certified engineer. We use really robust industry tools to do those propagation maps, and it's all based off of signal strength, right? So, you know, and again, Jessica correctly pointed out, we look at in-building coverage as important, right? If you can't have a, take a call from your car or walking into your home, that's not good coverage in our mind. And so we look at the signal strength, which is what's depicted in those, those pictures there, as green as, as the coverage we want to present to our customers.
Great. And then, and are you saying that this tower will be specifically used by AT&amp;T for AT&amp;T coverage customers, or would it be used by other phone carriers and AT&amp;T will lease that out to other carriers who don't have coverage in that area?
That's a great question.
Such as US Cellular?
Sure. No, that's a great question. I don't know. So to answer your question, what we've proposed is just AT&amp;T. But as you saw in the presentation, there was a space for a second carrier in the future if somebody were to come to the city or to us and ask for that space. I believe, and you might want to ask Planning, but I believe that would have to come back in for a conditional use permit to be approved by you guys. But the, the point is, this site is, you know, made to allow for a second carrier, so there wouldn't be a need for another pole, which is, which is a benefit to the city.
Great. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Excuse me. Regarding the engineering letter addressing the installation of an underground vault, you stated in your statement that there's not a way to do this, but I'm, I read the letter, I read it very carefully, and it says, "With these in mind, we suggest keeping the equipment above ground and avoid the underground vault. This decision will present, will prevent possible structural safety issues in the future." So, and it also indicates that the sort of going-in assumption is that you're using a prefabbed vault for this location. And it doesn't provide me with any indication as to whether or not there are alternative vaults that could be utilized to support any adjoining area. And frankly, I'm, I'm a little confused as to, as to why that's not addressed because if this area is, or if, if this kind of excavation would present a potential problem in that area with regard to those water, those, those water tanks up there, I guess my concern is, should we even be putting a cellphone tower up there to begin with if there are these structural considerations? And, you know, as, as you've indicated, FirstNet will be, would be installed with this, right? So, you know, my concern is, we have an earthquake or something like that, you know, if there's some sort of a, an issue with the, with the soil up there, then we have, potentially have problems with a site where FirstNet's not going to work. And that's my, that's my biggest concern. So are we saying that this is not, that this is just completely non-feasible and we could never do it? Or are we saying that we just, we just want to go with the prefab, we're not going to do anything beyond that? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Sure. I can, I can help answer your question. So I don't have the, the letter from the engineering group, structural engineers, in front of me, but I recall, you know, they, they did mention bedrock issues, having to excavate, and I may be wrong, correct me if I am, but I thought 25 feet in order to shore up space, there's a lot of heavy equipment, and obviously, the, the water tanks themselves are extremely heavy. So anytime you start to break ground and you go below grade, there's enormous, you know, structural issues, especially with the site. And I think that's what that letter emphasizes. Your point on FirstNet is, is, is spot on. And so I'll back up a little bit. You know, we do have vaults in other locations where it's required for, you know, there's reasons, and they're not optimal, right? Because now you've got all this equipment that gets relatively hot, that needs to be vented below ground. And also, you know, when you have rains and other things, there's sump pumps and things like that that are, that are put in place in order to keep the equipment running if there are heavy rains. But like anything else, things happen and there are failures. So I, I'd want you to be aware of that. It's, it's much more reliable for us to be above ground. We also have a backup generator that's, that's part of this installation, which is there for, you know, power outages, which is great for FirstNet and ban 14 use. So, you know, you had asked, is it possible for us to vault? Sure. I would assume, you know, if we, you know, really spent a lot of time cutting into and digging into the, the property, there's a possibility. But we'll have a site that I think is less reliable, given those, those restraints and restrictions on our equipment. We also have the water, Valencia Water Company is here as well. We haven't talked to them any further as to, you know, would they allow us to excavate, you know, this, this huge chunk of area in order to shore it up? That would be another question. But I do want to throw in one more thing, because I know that, I watched the hearing from October 26th, and your point regarding the above-ground facility was, you know, concerns regarding graffiti. And so I, I had a conversation earlier, and we also communicated previously with the property owner about graffiti, and they haven't had graffiti issues there. They do have someone that's on site usually once a day. And so AT&amp;T, we'd be more than happy, as a condition of approval, that you guys can add, asking us to have, you know, graffiti removed in a 72-hour period of, you know, notification, you know, and that would help to alleviate. And also, sorry, but we also included the, the vines, right, which make it pretty hard to, to do anything in the first place, so.
Sure. I, I understand, you know, that, that was something that I did bring up, but there is a, another concern, and frankly, it, it deals with the, the public safety aspect of things. And, you know, I, I don't think that this will ever happen in our city, God forbid, knock on wood and everything, but, you know, above-ground vaults are certainly much more susceptible to sabotage or any number of things that could happen. Whereas undergrounding, which is how we have in that area, the entire city with regard to utilities. I, I'm just trying to figure out why we would want to have an above-ground utility area. And, and the same thing goes with the generator. I, I don't understand why the generator would be above ground. That's, that's something that I see as potentially problematic, but I'll, I'll reserve my comments.
Did you want a further answer to the safety? So your question about the generator, yeah, I don't know that I can speak to that. I've never, I used to work on the network side. I don't recall ever seeing an underground generator. I mean, again, there's heating, cooling, air issues and whatnot, and really susceptibility to flooding, you know, in heavy rains is a problem. So if the generator, what's that?
I was just going to say, up on that hill, I think you have minimal.
I don't, I don't know, but I know, you know, we're also planting eucalyptus trees in there to help beautify, and leaves end up plogging things, and, you know, there are issues that, that do come from that. The facility that we're proposing, I believe, is like a, it's a standard above-ground.
It's a walk-in cabinet.
Walk-in cabinet, okay.
So it's completely enclosed, and then there's a CMU wall enclosure around it as well.
Okay.
And then in regards to the structural aspect, AT&amp;T does submit soil reports as well as structural report to the Building and Safety Department, and then we have to follow standard codes in regards to any safety aspects.
Okay. So, you know, I would say, you know, we, at this juncture, you know, we've, we've gone through, we've run it by our engineers, and they've told us it's not something that is, is viable at this point. You know, again, if we were to reconstruct part of that mountain or the hill, then, then it may be, but it, it's not something that, that, that we're able to do at this point. do at this point. I believe actually, and sorry, Jessica, is the facility enclosed with a fence? Isn't there a fence that surrounds the water facility?
Yes. Entire facility is enclosed. And as you can see from the photo sims, you cannot see the equipment enclosure from any of the view, even the ones on top. And then as well as where there is chain link fence, there's only one section of chain link fence which is down heritage park. We are planting new trees as well as new vines. And then that's not, you can't see it as well.
I have a question again, sorry. Can you confirm the coverage gaps? Is there coverage, just not all the five bars on the foam? Or there's completely no coverage in the areas you're indicating on your maps?
So, per those maps, the areas that are not green, if you were to walk into your home, you wouldn't be able to sustain standard coverage. So you, you may drop your call, you may, if you're, if you have an app or something else that's going on in the background, it, it may stop. That's, it's not consistent and it's likely not to work, right? So you may not be able to make a phone call from your home.
And how many, how many households are affected by that specific issue?
I don't know specifically. I think, did we ever provide a number?
No, it's maybe with RF that they weren't allowed to give us a number. They said they were required to give us very information. So it doesn't that.
So also, I also want to point out, because we've been focusing on indoor, you know, in-building coverage, which is your home and other buildings and facilities, there's also in-car coverage too, right? And you've got some relatively decent sized streets there, you know, people are communicating, and you've got other devices that are utilizing service. And so that's another consideration as we consider. That concludes my question. Thank you.
I actually like to add another question, since you're up there, to Commissioner Lewis, underground vault. Now, regarding this facility, if, I actually was fortunate to be able to walk in, because one day I was there and the gate was open. And to my surprise, the entire pool on the gate on the west side, not pool, sorry, is the tank, the huge, humongous two-water tank, as you were walking up, it's actually underground. It's sunk in on the hillside. So it's sort of like buried in there versus on the driveway that you're driving up, you see roughly eight, six, eight feet or so of the tank itself. So this humongous tank, I honestly, if I was not looking for a water tank, I wouldn't know that there's a water tank there because half of it was, was sunk into the ground. And the distance between ground, you, you mentioned quite a few times, that is the flooding issues, that's why you can't put the equipment underground. Now the distance-
One issue, or one reason, sorry.
Some of the equipment, or the underground facilities, or the equipments that you needed, that has to be above ground. I guess my question is, the distance between Barancas to Citrus or so is a 50-feet drop. And that, that, that particular water tank area is a much higher elevation than the park. So despite the fact that you are putting this particular small facility underground, you can pipe it out so that it would flow naturally going downhill. And it continue going downhill to Citrus or so. From Baranca to Citrus is about a 50-feet drop or so. And you got way above that. So there's no way of containing the water there, what's holding it back. So when you mentioned that flooding is an issue, I just, I'm not seeing that since it's sitting on the hillside. And even the tank itself, if there are some costs or some issues with the tank itself, the water is just going to flow downhill. And it continue going down off on ground and go down to the ocean. So I guess my question to you is, how is it that you cannot find pipe or something to, something that's up on the hill to drain that probably eight-by-eight box, I believe, right? It's, it's almost the size of a shed. So, and the other thing is regarding graffiti. Hate to say this, that we have been having graffiti issues. And we don't know where it comes from, but on the streets, on the asphalt, on the wash, anything, even in the, there is chain link fence, and we do live around even the golf course or whatever, they have chain link fence. But people manage to find and dug their way in there, pull out the fences and just go in or above it. So somehow, we are concerned, once, once it's built, it's just a nice great wall and quiet places for people to do their artwork, if you can call it an artwork. So that's, that's one thing that I like for you to see if you can, you know, I mean, you can't stop that. I've had a wash that I live in back of for like 200 feet or so. And one time, they drew the whole wash. I mean, the whole 200 or something feet of the wash. And they gave me nice, great, bright blue graffiti that I have to look at it for years to come. The other thing regarding gap is, in the report I read, it said significantly coverage gap.
Commissioner Hank, can I, can I, you have very good questions. Maybe we should let them answer one at a time.
Okay.
I'll go back to the vaults and then the graffiti and then we'll go. So the vaults, I don't mean to say that, that it's infeasible because of flooding. I'm just mentioning that in the past, we've had issues with that. And that's one concern that, that we look at and we take very seriously. I don't know about the drainage and running a pipe. I haven't seen that. Typically, what we do, it's a, it's a self-contained, completely sealed vault. It's sealed at the top. It's got a hatch. If you've got a slope that's running down into it, and it also has venting, then that water typically could get into the vault. And so I don't know the terrain as well as you do, unfortunately, but that is a concern. It's not a, you know, it's not the absolute reason why not to do it. But I will go back, you know, the facility itself that we've proposed, the CMU block wall is painted with an anti-graffiti paint. So when you actually go to spray paint on it, it beads up and it doesn't stick. And then on top of that, we're also placing the vines, right, that, that will maintain and allow to grow, which makes it also less attractive to spray. And we're also, to that same point, very happy to have you guys include a condition of approval that requires us to remove any graffiti, right, that, that happens. And we have the property owner that, you know, is there on a daily basis, right? So if they see something, they'll let us know. And we'd be happy to take care of that. So I completely understand your concerns. I'm not trying to, to say that they, you know, there isn't graffiti in that area or won't be, I don't know. But we do have, you know, quite a few measures in place to help mitigate anything and correct it if it does happen.
Okay. And I guess to my third question, this is adding to Commissioner Lewis's question, adding on some more, is regarding the gap. Because in here, regarding the engineer, they really emphasize on the significant coverage gap. Now, it did not say that there is a significant gap. It's, it's a coverage gap. So I guess, how did you define, if you can define that for me, what is significant gap and what is the coverage gap? And also, we got an indoor, outdoor, in transit, in a car. I guess the question comes in is, in this particular area, I'm very familiar with it because I lived there for years. And majority of the property owner there have half an acre to three acres, some are even more. So I guess the question comes in is, how many West Covina residents are being affected? Can you help me pull up the map on the, if you keep pulling it up?
I'm sorry, which map?
If you keep going, the, the, yes, the radius map. Thank you.
So on a separate presentation?
It's at the beginning.
The mailing radius, ma'am?
Yes. Please, thank you. That, that radius, which is the red line, is basically the mailing that's being sent out to all the residents in West Covina. According to my understanding is that the two home that's right next to the green, which is the park area to the east, would be residential for West Covina. Anything else to the east of that is not West Covina. And also, the, on the south side, which is of the circle, which is on the bottom portion, so it's like one, two, three, four, possibly five or six of them is belong to West Covina. So a total of six, seven, six, possibly eight, eight homes. So basically, two of them to the east is actually West Covina, actually one, because one of them belongs to Valencia Heights, which is the exact lot that we're talking about putting the equipment. And the one north of that, that's West Covina. Anything else east of that, I believe it's LA County. It's not West Covina at all.
Or Walnut?
No, I think it's LA County. It's county land. It belongs to LA County, unincorporated area of LA County. So if you look at to the south of it, which is a little sliver of that green, is West Covina only own. Anything below that, which is the south side, which is one, two, three, four, five lots. Yeah. Can you point it to the south, the lots, the five lots, one, wait there, one, two, yes, those. The five lots, those are West Covina, correct? So really, like six, six residents of residents was notified due to the radius map that, that was by code that we have to notify West Covina. So I guess my question comes in is, that whole area and the coverage you mentioned, it's not significant gap that we're talking about. It's a coverage gap, significant coverage gap. So there's, there's, there is a difference between those two.
Can you explain further? You're saying significant gap and significant coverage gap. I see-
No. In, in the report, in the report, it basically, and you also stated that it's significant coverage gap.
Sure.
So the coverage gap for West Covina, I guess the question comes in is, how many people, or how many residents are being affected in this, in the West Covina area?
I understand your question. So I can, I can, I'd like to start off by saying the notification radius has nothing really to do with, well, it doesn't depict our coverage area, right? So because you only see five or six homes there, doesn't mean that we're only covering five or six homes. It travels much, much further, right?
Right.
I don't have data on how many specific homes. And we don't release individual, you know, customer data or information. We look at, we, we use robust tools, right? We've got, you know, models and propagation maps and other tools that we use to go ahead and determine where we need a site, right? We don't build sites where it's not needed.
Yes.
And so those, those tests that you saw on, sorry, on the propagation maps, the different readings and stuff, in-building, outdoor and in-car are all based off of those, those, those models, right? And so there's, there's a lot of science that goes into that that, that we utilize. So I guess back to your question, I guess I was-
I guess at the end of the day is, I wanted to know how many resident, how many West Covina residents are being coverage, what you call it, the significant coverage gap are being affected from that general area? That's, that, that would be nice to know how many resident of West Covina is being affected. That's one. The other thing is that the significant, I like to also know regarding the significant grab, significant gap. I just wanted to know significant gap. How many residents have a drop call, whether it's indoor, outdoor, in a car, anywhere? I'd just like to know, in that area, if a person were to, any West Covina residents or any guest that comes into that general area, how many has a drop call?
Let me, let me answer.
Not getting any reception whatsoever.
Sure. Well, that's, that's, that's hard, right? Because again, we're not going into individual homes with, with, you know, RF signal meters to, to verify each individual home. We've got this data that we use across the entire country that is extremely reliable. But back to your original question about the number of homes, we don't share that information. And we weren't prepared to count individual homes that we thought might be, you know, covered by this specific site. You can see with the propagation maps, you can kind of outline specific areas based off of the dark green and look at streets and whatnot and kind of get a feel. But back to your question about significant gap and coverage, so, and dropped calls. So dropped calls is, is not something that, that we utilize very much. Not being able to make a call wouldn't show up on a dropped call log, right? So if you're in your home and you can't make a call, there's no dropped call. So it isn't really a very reliable metric. You know, whether or not you'd be able to make a call from every single one of those, those homes reliably all the time, you know, I, probably not, right? That's the reason why they're shown in, in, you know, purple and in yellow, because the DB level that, that we predict there, given the terrain and the distance from the existing site is low. So, yeah, I understand, and I watched the previous hearing, that there was a lot of, you know, questions regarding, you know, dropped calls and how we can sort of justify this for West Covina residents. And I completely understand that. I mean, I, it's, it's, some communities look at this as a benefit, because now you're getting, you know, 5G or 4G LTE service, you're getting, you know, reliability, you're able to make calls, your connected cars and vehicles and all sorts of stuff are now working properly, right? And reliably, reliably. Other people don't necessarily need that coverage. But there are folks that travel in and out, there are guests that come to other people's homes, there's, there's all sorts of, so, so just going ahead and identifying individual homes isn't a very good metrics for, you know, a need for a cell site, right? Again, back to the FirstNet, right? We don't have a band 14 site in that area. So there is no, we can't even show you a propagation map because there is no band 14 coverage there, right? And so-
I'm sorry, there's no what?
Band 14, which is our FirstNet, First Responder Network. It's a, it's a separate band that we utilize that's specifically for first responders.
Since you mentioned regarding the first responder, how many cell tower around that area? Not, I mean, obviously, you're AT&amp;T, and you probably know what other facility that people may or may not have, may have or may not have. So just the surrounding area, I think you pinpointed certain area that has that.
What?
Purple circles, purple circles where the green, obviously where the dark green is, that's going to be where a cell site is, because that's where it has good coverage. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six within that map. And then as you can see, there's a cell site where our rest of the world is.
So which one would be the closest to the red dot that we have right now?
You'd have to, I mean, yeah, you'd have to, we didn't come prepared with measurements and whatnot, so I don't want to-
And just to help answer that question, Public Safety has, have their own public safety towers. And I believe the West Covina Police Department, and I believe the Fire Department run off digital radio. Is that correct, city staff?
Actually, can the-
I'm not sure I know that I answered that question, but I know we have a radio tower on the city property adjacent to the land, the BKK site.
Correct. Yeah. And it's digital transmitted, so it's not analog. So we actually have a, an advanced system in the city of West Covina.
Thank you. The best systems, is that what you said?
An advanced, so, like, excuse me, like LAPD and so forth, they use analog still. So West Covina uses digital, which is a higher, higher, more reliable service.
Can staff please explain to the commission and the public, I think they would want to know, what is FirstNet? I mean, how does that compare to what we have?
I'm not sure I'd be able to accurately answer that question for you, but it is a service that Public Safety uses.
And they're using a different type of, they're using a digital and radio transmission?
Well, they're not going to use that tower to, to go on the radio and communicate. They have their own, they have their own designated tower for Public Safety, and it's on, adjacent to the BKK landfill, like Paulina mentioned. And I also have a quick question for you. Would you also confirm that if there was, for some reason, a less coverage area there, that while you're in your home, most phones, like the Apple iPhone, you could be able to do Wi-Fi calling? So what it does is use your phone connection plus your Wi-Fi connection and combine that service. So you could have a better network coverage. So if you had to call 911, that you- So if you had to call 911, that, combining those two services is actually, it's a reliable service that most phone carriers like iApple provide, and Samsung, and Android phones?
That is an option, and a lot of folks use that. I don't know that it's a reliable option entirely. I, I'm not here to speak to that. Again, you know, you may be connected in your home, and you step out, and you drop your Wi-Fi connection, and so your call is therefore dropped. But that is, that is something that is an option.
Right. Thank you.
But, but again, right, so, coverage, significant gap, we're here to, to fill an area that, that, that we've identified through our modeling, has, you know, poor coverage from our perspective, from AT&amp;T, right? We've been developing our network now for, for decades, and as more and more users, subscribers, you know, start joining our network, or, you know, subscribers add new devices, and devices utilize more and more bandwidth, right? The footprint of all those existing cells, they slowly sort of shrink, right? It's like a hose. You only have so much that you can, you can, you know, let out, and, and if you've got more people kind of using it, that footprint shrinks. And so this is also another means to help fix that. And you'll see in those coverage maps, as we, you know, add this new site, the other areas are offloaded. And so there's improved coverage in other areas that aren't, you know, directly near this site. So there, there's a lot of benefits that come from it. And I don't, you know, I, I understand the focus on, you know, individual homes and whatnot. Go back to what I said earlier, these are propagations, you know, one home may be above another home, there may be a home blocking another home, so this home gets the, the coverage, because it's, it's got a direct line of sight, but it, you know, the signal doesn't go through the walls of that home to the next home behind it, right? There's all sorts of issues when you're looking at RF, you know, propagation that's done through those modeling, you know, process.
And in all your modeling, in none of your modeling shows a zero coverage area, correct?
So, you know, when you look at the area.
I understand there's a low, low frequency area, but in your mapping, and also on the FCC's website, it shows, it actually shows coverage. So the only difference is that you're ideally wanting to make that coverage stronger, correct?
No, that's not correct. So there is a significant coverage gap, as shown by the map there. You know, in-building coverage is extremely important, in, in-car coverage is extremely important, and that's lacking currently, right now. So there's definitely a significant gap that we're here to, to fix, and that's why we came to you and asking for.
Can city staff zoom in to the map on the left?
Um, I can try, let's see. Oops. It was also an attachment provided on the agenda that would probably be a better image, because it's more blown up.
Black and white.
This one?
Yeah, the one on the left, though. That's, coverage before, coverage as, as is now. Yeah, the one on the left.
While we're looking for the coverage map, or the coverage, I have a quick question, though. If I have an AT&amp;T, and I'm a customer service, a customer for AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile, or Verizon, if I were to ask, where are the drop calls, their customer service can provide that information to each individual customers? Would, would that be fair to say? Like, if I were to sign up for AT&amp;T, would AT&amp;T be able to provide to me that your area had no service?
So I don't, I apologize, I don't know that I can answer that fully. I don't work in a retail section, but typically, when you go into a store and you are looking to add, you know, as a, as a customer for AT&amp;T or any other provider, we do have maps that we utilize that give you a general idea, right? But they don't, we don't zoom in this sort of, you know, detail level, right?
Because typically, on the website, or when I have a questions, would you call them, but they provide that informations to their customer? Like, if I'm a customer, they can provide that information?
What we provide is what, what you guys are able to see, which you mentioned, you know, the FCC maps, that's typically what.
Yeah. So that's the map you're, you're referring to, right? That you say, does it have coverage?
Correct, that's our.
So on, on your, on your diagram on the bottom right, that just shows it's a outdoor single. So which area shows no coverage? I'm confused.
The, the red dot is our site, right? And all of the yellow and purple are, are poor coverage, right, for indoor, or non-existent coverage?
So there is coverage, correct? It's just not strong coverage?
No, it's non-existent or poor, sorry. I, I know we're splitting hairs here. There are going to be some homes that have no coverage at all, there'll be some homes that have poor coverage, but all of those areas do not have sufficient LTE coverage today.
So LTE is a, is a higher cover, is stronger single? In order to get LTE, you need a stronger single?
Not necessarily, no. This is just the standard LTE is, is 4G, and that's what most utilize today, right? And so currently, if you are in an area that's in the purple area or the yellow area, you are going to have poor or no.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't see any area over there that has a, no color at all, which means there's coverage, but not strong coverage. But that's, that's Mike Steeman, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for answering all that question.
Yeah, no problem.
I only have one question. On the photos that were provided regarding the, a mock of what the, the actual cell tower will look like. I mean, here it appears to blend. What are the possibilities of, and I believe at the last hearing, it was said that it could go up to, how many feet high would they, was said? It was 60 feet high?
So that, yeah, your municipal code says 60 feet. There is a 6409 federal law that states that another carrier can come in and expand it up to 20 feet, but that's not what we're proposing here. We're proposing the 60 feet.
But it's not out of the question?
It's not out of the question for, for any carrier, no.
Okay. Do you have, I mean, this is, these are black and, I, I couldn't really see the pictures that we're up there with, to see what they actually look like. I know that we have one, I think, at Cameron Park, which doesn't look so great.
I'm sorry, was the, this one? Or?
Any of those, if, if you could zoom in. I'm sorry, what?
Did, did you want to see the design of the proposed monoglyptus?
Yes, but not, not a drawing, an actual.
Like an elevation?
No.
Actual photo sim of the eucalyptus.
Well, so the photo sims are only taken at the angles that were previously, you know. You do have a material board that shows on, on rendering.
Now, in terms of the width wide, now that this picture is up, the balloon is how many feet that you have versus how, how many, how wide is the tree itself right now?
So the balloon is there in place for our photo sim vendor to get the height, so that's at 60 feet, and then.
How wide, how wide is the balloon relative to what it is?
I'm not the photo sim vendor, I, I wouldn't know the, the width of it.
I wish you knew when the balloon was there, so we can go around that area and take a look as well, when you were doing the photo sim.
I'm sorry?
I wish I knew that you had a balloon up there, so that we can actually go by and take a look, because I did drop by once or twice after the meeting, just to see the area.
Well, the balloon's only up during the photo sim portion.
I understand, I understand. But I, I'm, I'm just saying, it's a wishful thought, that if you had it up, I would like to see it when it was up. But unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't know about it, so.
And then, yeah, so then the facility itself is obviously simulated to show the same height as the balloon. The width, I believe on the drawings, on the antenna layout, it has the, the width of the tower, the branch diameter. So that would be on our drawings, on the antenna layout.
So 20 feet would be the maximum?
Or, I'm sorry?
For the, to extend it, would be?
It's, it's, sorry, I'll jump in if you don't mind. So she referred to 6409, which allows you to go, I think it's 20%?
10 feet, 10%.
Okay, 10 feet, okay, or, okay. But again, we would have to come back in to you guys for that, and staff, right, to submit that. This tower, I can tell you is.
I think we were told that you didn't have to, that it wasn't required.
You have to file it to staff.
Is it required?
It is required to submit an application with the city. It's not required for a conditional use permit, that I'm aware of, but it is required to submit under an admin review, that has to follow a shot call.
Is it required to come before the planning commission?
It is not required.
Should we, can we ask staff that question? Do we know if we then exceed the maximum height, if we have to come in for modification and bring it before the planning commission?
In, in the case that you described, it requires a minor site plan review, it does not require planning commission approval. It's just unadministratively. It, it also does not require public notification as well.
That answers my question, thank you. All right, any more questions for the applicant?
I just have one more question. Since, since this site is located on the very edge of this, of the city limits of the city of West Covina, were any other sites outside of the city limits of the city of West Covina considered for this site? I know you identified, I think, several locations within the city, but given the location and the topography, there, there are several locations that have sort of a raised topography that are just outside the city limits, were any of those considered?
Sure, so we, I think I mentioned before, too, we are given a search ring from our RF engineer, and that is, only goes within a certain radius, certain miles. So the sites that we were, we did reach out to are all within the city of West Covina, just because it was in the location of the search ring.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica and Dan. Appreciate it, your presentation, and answering the questions. At this time, we'd like to hear from those in favor. Okay, we'll start with those who are opposed. Mike Pennell? Can you please bring up the picture with the balloon?
Sure.
Thank you.
One second.
One next to it with the tower.
I'm going to need to speak into the microphone.
One with the balloon, and the one next to it with the tower. That's the one. I don't know if, the last time, the last time I was here was, they were trying to, they were going to put it on the South Hills Golf Course, and I don't know if this is, this is the planning commission? You guys are the planning commission, or are you the city council?
Planning commission.
Okay, so, but I think it was the city council that they were trying to get a permit to put it on the South Hills Golf Course. And that was a couple of years ago, and I thought that was going to pass and be approved, but apparently, it was not. I don't know why. I know that somebody came in with a petition, and said she had her neighbors, 26 or eight of her neighbors signed a petition against the, the tower, because it was going to block her view. It wasn't going to block the view of the 26 other people that signed the petition, just her view, but she went around to her neighbors and got their signatures. I could do that, because all my neighbors like me, and I could get all my neighbors to sign a petition against this, but I'm not that person. It's only going to block my view, because I live on Hillside, and that's going to be right in the middle of my view that I paid for. I got the city lights at night, I've got the mountain view in the daytime, and I love that view. And you're going to stick this tree right in the middle of it. My neighbor doesn't care so much, because his trees, I've lived there for 20 years, and his trees have grown up and blocked my view, and he didn't care. But he let me pay to have his trees trimmed, so that I continue to have my view, and I've spent thousands of dollars over the last couple of years, five or six years, because once you trim the trees, they start growing faster. So every year, I got to have his trees trimmed down with his permission, so that I can continue to have my view. That's going to be right in the middle of my view, as you can see it, right there. The trees that there are there now, the existing trees with the tanks, is not a problem, because they're low enough. But that tree is going to be, because I went out there today and took a look at it. I called Valencia Water Company a while back, and they told me that this wasn't going to block my view, that I wouldn't be able to see it if I lived on Hillside, and that it was going to be on Cameron, that the tower was going to be on Cameron. And so that wouldn't bother my, that wouldn't block my view if it was on Cameron. And somebody came by and stuck this on my mailbox, and with the map, shows me that it's going to be at the towers, which I can see from my backyard. And the towers are not a problem, the park behind me I love, even though I get the backside of it, but I still love my view of the mountains and the city lights at night. And so I called them again today, and the water company said, yeah, we're going to put it right there, next to the towers, which is going to be right in the middle of my view. And my view and my neighbor's view, which I could get their signatures, but I didn't bother with, that's ugly, and it's going to be right in the, take away my million-dollar view. You could put it down in the park, further down, that's the highest point in the park. If you put it down with, anywhere else in the park, by the parking lot, or anywhere else down and below, the 60 feet won't bother me. Now you're telling me, if I heard her correctly, that they can add another 20 feet and make it 80 feet tall? 60 feet's bad, 80 feet's impossible. But it doesn't need to be at the highest peak. You could put it down in the park, and nobody would care. You could put it on Cameron, you could put it on Grand Avenue, right off the roadway, and there's millions of trees and shrubbery, it's, it's going to blend right in and not bother anybody. But I'd still like to know why they didn't put it in the, the golf course, which wouldn't have bothered only but one person, but that's all I have to say. I, I can't imagine you would stick this right in the middle of your view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennell. Pauline Maxwell?
I agree with this gentleman totally. It's sticking out like a sore thumb. And guess where my house is? You see the roof right there? That's my house. So actually, it's only about 20 feet from my front yard, and then sticking up like a sore thumb. I lived there for over 40 years, have no problem with drop calls or anything like that. No, we, we don't need anything like that there. So just for the neighborhood, I don't think we need anything like that in the neighborhood. This is really, really bad, really, really bad. So actually, I have other neighbors, they want to protest too, but they couldn't make it tonight. So in a sense, I'm kind of representing the, all the Hillside neighbors right around the water tower. So I hope your council would pay some attention to what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Zohoff? Zohoff? I'm sorry, Marco?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Marco Zell and I'm here to represent, um, Ms. Susanna Al and Dr. Richard Fernands. Um, can we pull up the map where the photo sims were taken from? So upon reviewing the photo sims maps, um, we actually live east of the site. So I guess that would be under the LA County jurisdiction, as you mentioned earlier. Our backyard is actually elevated quite high, um, almost in line with the roofline of our house, which I believe is also in line with the, um, the water, um, the water structure or maybe even higher. Um, at the backyard, we have a view that going, that goes west to the site where the proposed is. And, um, with the cell tower, it directly obstructs the view as the surrounding all have lower elevated trees. Um, if this was built, it would directly stick out in the middle of the frame, um, on the backyard. And I think it, it is visually obstructive. And reiterate, we are against the, um, proposal to build a cell tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenic Rosa? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read the writing. J E N, is it I C or J E N K?
Uh, it's J E R.
Okay.
Uh, hello, sorry about that. But, uh, I am Jerick Rosal. Uh, I'd also like to speak on behalf of Susanna Al and Richard Fernands. Um, I agree with the points that Marco has made and I'd like to reiterate that I'm against the cell tower. And then I'd also like to mention that, uh, Commissioner Lewis did bring up a good point. The cell tower does bring up some safety concerns, uh, regarding it being really close to the water towers. And I believe that is something to, that, that is a very important thing to make note of. What if something, uh, did happen to the towers really close to the water tanks? But that's, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Patty?
I'm having a hard time reading names tonight.
Sorry, my, terrible. Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Happy holidays to everybody. I'm here again. First, I wanna say I'm kind of shocked by the applicant's statement that they don't have the data. The whole reason they want the tower is because of significant gap in coverage, but then they don't tell us how many people need coverage. That doesn't make sense to me. That just doesn't, that tells me the corporate wants it, but it's not for the people. Because where are the numbers? That kind of bothers me as a resident and an owner in, in South Hills. The, the main reason, what I really wanted to talk about though was just how I feel about, I hope West Covina protects the citizens. I know, I have friends in Walnut and they demand a 1,500-foot, um, distance from any cell tower, minimum 1,500. And this nice lady over here, Pauline, I pick her up to bring her here? I could throw a stone, when I was at her house, I'd pull in, I could throw a stone and hit the water tower. She is that close, she is right on the edge, it blew my mind. And I just think it's so unfair because, I mean, I love my cellphone. I have an AT&amp;T, I have a Verizon, iPads up the Wahoo, cellphones, I mean, I wouldn't, couldn't live without it. But I don't want a cell tower on my house or next door to my house. I think that's where everybody gets a little nervous. I mean, we all love our cell stuff, right? Can't live without it. But I just, it concerns me when they encroach on our private lives and get too close to where we live. And I, I think Walnut's leading the charge and I think they're doing it right by having a little distance. So I hope you all can do that for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Ramos? Jody Johnson?
Well, uh, thanks for listening here. We're just, um, just wanted to mention that the, the safety issue of it all, I'm surprised no one's brought that up. There was just a recent, studies have been done that the 5Gs basically causes the same symptoms as COVID. And it helps exacerbate that and just something to look into. It's not a, it's not, not a good technology. So we're definitely against it. So that's all I just wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, would the applicant like to come and up and, I'm sorry, did you want to?
If you could fill out a speaker card when you're done.
Hi, yeah, let me fill this in real, real fast.
Oh, you can do it when you're done.
Okay, I can do it after. Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Giving, uh, giving, um, planning commissions and again, happy holidays. So listening through this whole thing and just my personal experience, because I live around the area, actually drive by and I work in tech, so I'm all over wired up. So I need those cell, cells, all the, all cell signals as I'm driving up and down and, and doing my work. And I don't experience drop calls. I don't know where you guys are getting this data from. I mean, that's crucial for me. I mean, I would gripe up and down the street if I can't, you know, be able to be on my, uh, uh, pad, have a Verizon signal, AT&amp;T. I think I had AT&amp;T, yeah, about 10 years ago, then I switched to T-Mobile and never had a problem, even with AT&amp;T. I mean, T-Mobile never had a problem either. So I, I don't get the significant gap or even a gap issue. I don't know where they're pulling the data from. And I, I, I mean, you just gotta go and check it out, walk around the place and check. I mean, I would love to have videotaped my cell signal walking around that place, but it just, there's no gap. I don't know if you guys can, I mean, if anybody got me wrong, let me know. But I've never experienced any drop calls and I drive up and down the street all the time, go to Heritage Park, work some time over there because it's a nice place. Nobody really goes there, but it's a nice place to do the day. So I want to just bring that up, that hey, for the city to consider putting a cell tower that is gonna be aesthetically, uh, an eyesore basically to the neighbors. And I kind of know, cause when you, in that area where Commissioner Heng was saying, hey, there's a bowl, that is a depressed location. It's lower. So I'm just kind of scratching my head and say, why stick it in a lower location in the first place? But the neighbors around it all overlook that area. So they're gonna see it no matter how well they hide it. And I don't know, the photo sim makes everything look good. But my three-year-old can pick out a cell tower and all these little plastic things that come out of it. We can drive down the freeway at 60 miles an hour and he'll be able to point it. And these are pretty decent looking cell towers in my opinion, not like the industrial looking one. He can see the trees and he say, hey, that's a cell tower. And so it's an eyesore, no matter which way you look at it. So, you know, in, in terms of, you know, what the gentleman just said about safety and stuff like that, I know the commissions can't consider that as part of your decision. So, you know, if you have to protect the city and make sure you, you know, their lawyer's gonna, gonna, uh, advise you in that area. But, you know, all we can do is aesthetics and if we need it. And if there's a gap, you know, we need it. There's no gap. And aesthetics, it's a freaking eyesore. I don't know, I, I just can't say any other way unless they can put it on live trees. So that's the two main points I have to say. It is gonna be a, a huge eyesore because it's gonna stick out, especially for the neighbors that's gonna have to overlook it and get, you know, prove to me that there's a gap. I mean, that map looks good, but it, it doesn't, I mean, where the rubber meets the road where it's actually the cell dropping, the call's dropping, it doesn't exist. That's it for me.
Thank you. At this time, would the applicant like to come up?
Thank you, commissioners. Um, so I'd like to start, I'm not sure that if the last customer, or sorry, last resident has AT&amp;T as a service provider. It sounded like it was Verizon, so I, I don't know if that-
I had it before.
Well, so, um, what I was gonna say is years ago, again, um, back to the coverage issue, as more and more folks start using devices, um, it shrinks that footprint. So 10 years ago, um, the coverage might have been better. And also there was a much, you know, lighter demand for, uh, capacity, right? From a data perspective, uh, 10 years ago. You know, that, that's grown exponentially every year. So, um, I wanted to thank you guys, I wanted to thank staff. I know we've worked for over six months, um, with them to, to get this to where we're at and to get their, their recommendation for approval. We've followed the code, um, you know, uh, we've gone ahead, we've taken some additional measures to make sure that we mitigate the concerns that we heard on the 26th of October. And, and we do have a significant gap. You know, we provided a, a signed certified letter by one of our RF engineers. There's also a letter that was provided to you folks, um, I think that it was part of the agenda as well. Sort of going to more detail as to, you know, explaining what the significant gap is, you know, specifically, uh, indoor LTE coverage. We also, um, are, are hopeful that we can, um, you know, get the site built so that we can do our band 14 first net, uh, service as well. And I understand it sounds like the city doesn't utilize that, but other, uh, responders that may have to come in for any other services may be using that. Um, we're expanding that footprint on a, on a daily basis. So, um, I appreciate your consideration and I understand your concerns and, and we're, we're here as a partner. We've been working with staff, um, we've been working with the Valencia Water Company closely and, um, we're, we're happy to, you know, take any additional concerns into consideration and, and work with you folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, uh, do any of the commission have any questions for applicant, Commissioner Williams?
No, I have no questions.
Commissioner Heng?
No, not at this moment, thank you.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
No.
Vice Chair Lewis?
No.
At this time, we're gonna- You know, we've already allowed the public to speak.
I have no problem.
I'm sorry, it's, uh-
Sorry, we can't have you speak, Danny.
I'm sorry. We're, we're actually going to be closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. We're gonna close the public hearing and, uh, we will now open for commissioner discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to deny conditional use permit number 21 dash 03, uh, with the category exception.
Madam Chair, you can go ahead and see if there's a, a second to that motion before you begin any discussion.
Well, actually, I'd like to second.
Okay. Um, and before the commission, uh, begins its discussion, I would like to make some statements for some clarification of the record and to answer some of the questions that we've heard from the speakers tonight. Cities may not, uh, make their decisions based on any radio frequency emissions if the proposed wireless facility complies with FCC RF admissions regulations. So there's a preemption there and that's why we're not discussing that tonight. That's not before this commission tonight. I heard, uh, we've heard comments about Walnut's code and the separation between residences and facilities. Our code, uh, requires a 100-foot separation at which they have met in this application. So just for clarification, it's a different code standard. Ours is 100 feet and they've met that requirement. And federal case law has made clear that a significant gap in service is a gap in a provider's own service coverage. And the determination is based on a fact-specific analysis.
And I could confirm that my motion, uh, was in adherence to those policies, uh, in, in following the guidelines. So just to confirm for the part of record. Thank you.
I concur.
So we have a motion to deny the project by Commissioner Gutierrez and seconded by Bistera. Would we like to take roll call?
Um, can we have a discussion first?
Why don't we have to roll call first?
You, you can have a discussion.
Before roll call?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess before, before, um, finding necessary for approval of conditional use permit are as follows. So there's quite a few items on the findings, whether we should be approving the conditional use permit or not. And before I go on with the findings or the discussions, I like to say that as planning commissions in all decisions, my decisions at least, and, and on behalf of the planning commissions, that we're not, um, we're not, um, basically, um, regulating the placement or the constructions or modification of personal, um, cell tower service on the basis of the environmental factors. I just want to make it clear, uh, on my, on, on my behalf. I'm gonna focus on the findings, uh, for the approval of conditional use permit as the followings. It has A through G or so and that the purpose used at the particular location is necessary or desirable to provide a service or facility which will contribute to the general well-being of the neighborhood or community. From hearing from the meeting from this time and also from last time, um, the last meeting sometime in October, um, later half of October, I find that the finding that it is not necessary or desirable. Part of that was from the last meeting and also from this meeting is that not one resident come up to say that they needed the service or have, or, or even have a drop called. In fact, residents are saying the complete opposite. Whether, you know, that they don't want it or they don't need the service based on what I'm hearing, one after the next. The other findings that I find is that the company has not given, um, any data with numbers that stating that there is a significant drop called or significant gap in the area. I've, I've noticed that they define a coverage gap, but I haven't hear that how many residents are being affected. It doesn't have to be what closest to it, but even in county or that surrounding area, how many? Because this is a rural area and every half an acres or three acres or so, that's how many residents for, for single residential home in this area. I haven't seen that data from the last time or from this time. There are very few residents that live in this area. I mean, there are residents and there are travel and there are commute, but far fewer than most area. So I haven't, you know, that potential number or that future number, I haven't seen it and I like to see that number. But none of the current data or figure in this area presented tonight. I'm not even sure if it's affecting 1,000 people or 100 people or 5,000 people. So we don't, we don't know that. So based on that finding, that it's really difficult to find that this is a desirable location. Now B, that such use will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity or interest to property or improvements to the vicinity. Now, that such use, uh, I would also say that it is detrimental to the person residing in the area, just like the gentleman that had come up here and say, it's really difficult to be able to, just looking at the park. And even the park use, that's a residential use. It is a residential use, an open space for the resident that live around that area to go and enjoy the park, whether it's from their home or whether at the park. That's the land value that they, they, they purchase the land value that comes with beautiful parks and beautiful area. So I find that that's not adding value to the resident. And the resident hasn't come up and say that that's what they wanted. In fact, that they're saying the opposite. It's, it's, it's their million dollar view home or their, their, you know, I mean, they haven't come up and say such. So the water tank, even the facility that got probably a conditional use permit, so now this general area is a residential area. You look up north to the south, to the east, to the west- You look up north, to the south, to the east, to the west, with the exception of the park. And with the exception of two items. The park, which is mainly predominantly for residential use, and the part of the tank area is also a conditional use permit which was asked for years ago. And even with that tank, it was, it was buried, somewhat buried into the hill. Now, adding this particular equipment, whether it's above-ground equipment or the tower itself, which that general area, even the tank at the time was approved, was no more than six feet high from that elevation around that area. I don't know, six or 10 feet high from that area. But yet, today, we're being asked to add something that is 60-foot or can possibly add-on. I'm not sure we are, you know, getting permission or not. That can potentially be in an area that's only allowed two-story-high area, that's 20 feet in that area. The highest structure in that, all that area is, is predominantly 20 feet or, or one story. But this is, can potentially be six stories or eight-story-high structures. So that, to me, is just not, it's not adding in an area in a value to residential area that is consistent with the general use. And that also cover with, I believe, with C. And, um, so E basically stated that, that the granting of such conditional permit will not adversely affect the general plan of the city or any other adaptive plan of the city. I said that this will affect the general plan of the city, because mainly that area is predominantly residential. Like I would say, surrounded by residential with one exception of open space. And the other exception is the water tank use, which is also a utility and to services the resident. But that, like I said, it was very buried into the, the hillside. So, again, mainly residential area to north, east, west, and the south. So park is, is to the added additions of the residential use. It was granted a long time ago for the tank usage, and we're moving away from residential use if we are adding one more item to this. Meaning that our general plan in that area is predominantly residential use.
I just want to confirm one thing, I'm so sorry. Under Robert Rules of Orders, once there's a first and second, you have to call roll call. And then, before the member, before the member votes, they can make comments before their vote. But I think, just to make sure we don't get this in a challenge course, roll call has to be followed by the Robert Rules of Orders.
Commissioner Gutierrez, you, you can have further discussion with the pending motion and second. We can't have any discussion afterward. So, so that's, that's why...
I think the discussion was just reaffirming what we've already, you know, voted on.
Yeah.
I'm almost done, basically, just a short sentence or more. I guess G, G basically stated that the findings, the finding to see whether we, to grant the conditional use permit or not, I just want to go through it. The facility is designed to blend with an existing supporting structures and does not substantially alter the character of the structure or local area. And I don't see that, now, the tank, to me, that was approved a long time ago, the water, humongous water tank, that it seems to blend in with the natural area, that, that, that whole area. But I don't see that, basically, even the tank itself is no more than one stories of a building within that area. So it sort of does blend in that area. However, with the, the existing structure that is going to be 60 feet, it could potentially, that's almost, to me, is like a six-story-high or potentially can grow to an eight-story-high. That's not blending into the neighborhood in that some of the neighbor will be able to see it. So those are the finding that I find, just going through A through G, that I find that it's not, um, it's not, um, the finding that is, I, I don't find that it's, it's, you know, to approve for the conditional use permit. So, so we can do the approval, oh.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Hang. Madam Chair and Commissioners, just for the record, the application meets the height requirements set forth in our code. The, any addition is pursuant to federal law, but that is not before you tonight. They do meet the height limitations. Commissioner Gutierrez, just for the record, you have a, a motion pending. Commissioner Hang has identified several findings that she feels cannot be made. In order for a resolution of denial to be prepared in, in case your motion should pass, could you please identify the findings that are your basis for your motion?
Well, that's not legally required. But I, I can say that I am making a motion to deny the use permit number 21-03, because based upon my research, it shows a coverage area there. For, for, for anyone to say that there's no coverage at all, that, that the map does not show that. So, just for that, for the record, and also legally, I'm not required to explain myself on, on why I made a motion, but go ahead.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I, I, it, it is, um, your, your decision should be based on certain findings. Commissioner Hang has identified several, including in your packet.
I can confirm that I, based upon those findings, that I made my decision in accordance with the guidelines on, on making my, my decision tonight.
Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, then you can call for a vote.
Can the staff read the resolution number?
The motion was to deny resolution number 216101. Would you like me to do roll call, or is there further discussion? Okay. Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hang? A yes would be denial. A no would be not, approving the project, or not denying it.
Yes, if you...
Okay, so yes is a denial, correct?
Yes.
So it would be a yes.
Okay. Vice Chair Lewis?
No.
And Chair Biscara?
Yes.
So, the motion passes, or? Three, two.
This action is final unless appealed to the City Council within 10 days.
So, Paulina, can you please explain the 10-day appeal process?
So, anyone has the option to appeal the Planning Commission's decision this evening.
So it's, it's not really final per se? They can appeal to the City Council within the 10-day?
Correct. Within 10 days, if not appealed.
Okay.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I may add, if appeal is desired, the City Clerk's Office would have to be contacted. The City Clerk's Office does have an application that would have to be completed, and there is a fee involved. So, to appeal a Planning Commission, a Planning Commission decision to the City Council, the City Clerk's Office would have to be contacted, and the application would have to be filed with the City Clerk's Office.
Thank you for the explanation. At this time, we have no non-hearing items on this agenda tonight. So we will move on to Commission reports and miscellaneous items. Thank you. Would any of the Commissioners like to report or comment on an item? I have something that was brought to my attention in the subcommittee meeting, where there are, well, we're updating code enforcement and codes. And there are certain items that the Planning Commission can vote on to, to update on our end that would help with some of the items that we've had issues with. So, one of them, what I asked about was the 300-foot radius where an applicant would have, have to give notice to residents. And they said, within the Commission, we could change that. So I would like to ask the Commissioners for assistance and their input on what would be beneficial for the residents.
Since it's not agendized, the Commission can't vote and discuss. However, if you would like staff to agendize it, we can. Agendize it for a code, code amendment initiation.
So staff would be looking for consensus from the Commission whether or not you want to agendize this for a future discussion.
I'll second the Chair's motion to agendize the item.
I think we just need a consensus, you don't need a formal roll call.
Okay, well, I agree.
Just, we're having a discussion?
We will, we will agendize it, and then that's when you guys can have a discussion of, of the radius for notifications to the neighboring properties.
Okay.
Could we also add for the 100-foot distance from a cell tower as well?
No, that would be a different code section. And that code section to update that is very involved, and it already has been initiated.
By who?
It's already been initiated, so it's already being looked at. Okay.
That's for cell, cell towers on private property.
Right. Oh, it's been initiated?
It's been initiated, yes, by the City Council.
Perfect.
So if they agendize it, they'll bring back a proposal, and then we could have a discussion then. And then, if we want to amend something from it, they could go back into, go back to the table and work it on, work on it again.
Thank you. Okay. Paulina, are there any other items to report to the Commission?
There are no forthcoming items. We will be canceling the December 28 Planning Commission. We, the City Hall will be closed during that break for the holidays. So, other than happy holidays for everyone, there's nothing forthcoming.
Were there any council actions, City, that you'd like to report?
The City Council did pass the emergency ordinance pertaining to SB 9. Staff of the City Attorney's Office will be monitoring any updates regarding SB 9. And if necessary, will come back to the Planning Commission for any changes or updates that need to be made. I also wanted to kind of reiterate, Chair Biscara mentioned, we held a first subcommittee meeting for the Development Code update. We are looking to start having workshops with the community and stakeholders starting end of January, and we will be notifying January 2022. We will be notifying and promoting those workshops to invite and include everyone that would like to participate in them.
Since there's no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 8:43.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.